Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Mine's working.
It's on me.
I think you all are now. Here's a, uh, you wanna just say hello? Hello? Did you turn the tone on?
Mic working.
Yeah.
On the bottom.
Mic working? Yeah.
Mine's working. Sorry.
We can share.
Can somebody just give me a working mic? Alright, no? No, working. Working was the key word. It was working. Alright, now that one's working. Thank you. I'd like to, uh, see if we can adopt an agenda.
So will.
This one doesn't work.
Not yet?
Second.
All in favor of the agenda as it is?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Speak up if you don't have a mic. Alright, we have an agenda, thank you. Uh, motion to approve the minutes from the July 20th City Council meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes approved. Bills in between?
Second.
Any discussion?
There was an item from the plunge and it was for a DVR. Oh, okay.
Bills in between? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims? Kara? Oh, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Kara.
So there was a bill for Abbott's plunge.
What page?
It's for DVR. And I looked through the bills today. I don't know what page it is, maybe Misty you can...
What page? Oh.
I called Misty about this today and she explained it to me. Misty, can you explain?
It was door security products. The total bill was $795.20. It was DVR repairs and two service call charges. The question, I'm sorry, H6. Door security product is about three quarters of the way down. The question was whether or not, since that's a newly installed, uh, security system, why, if there was some kind of incident that needed repair by that wasn't covered in a warranty? We tried to call the company, but their operating hours for their billing clerk is only 10 to 3. So we have to call them back tomorrow to see if maybe this should have been covered under some type of warranty. So if you'd like to approve the bills without paying that claim, I'm open to that.
I agree with that.
I think. Okay. Any other discussion? Questions?
I make a motion to approve.
We go ahead again.
Yeah, so, that's okay?
We also had, uh, on page 11, Henderson, Palmer, and Nelson. Another charge for overfalls. Was that through?
Yes. Well, he did come down and, um, talk to the new council on the 10th of July. I must, is it said to assume that that's what this is?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I am.
Okay. Anyone else? The geological survey? Is that frequent?
It's done annually, it's paid by the water department, although it is for the same...
You guys aren't with Mike at all? Alright, any other questions, concerns, comments?
So the current claims also on points of the credit cards. Wells Fargo.
For some reason they're separate? Uh, uh, uh.
Well, they're in a separate bag.
It's separate sheet.
So, no, we're gonna do just current claims and then we'll do the credit cards.
Okay.
We'll need a new motion to approve that removing the door security products until further.
So I do need a new motion.
Motion to approve the current claims without the security charge on $707.
Second. All in favor of the new, the new motion? Nobody wants to pay?
Yes?
That's the credit cards. Okay, that's the next one. So on favor of current claims as proposed with removing door security? I know some of you answered down here. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear me really well, so. I'll make that motion. We got a motion.
We got it.
That's why I'm not sure everybody can hear. We got a motion, a second, all in favor of current claims with the change?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Now the Wells Fargo credit cards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, we're paying our bills, Misty. Alright, communications from the public. I've had three people request time, in no particular order. We have Laura Marchant. Is she here? Laura? She wants a dog park. So we will move to the second, Scott Goodall and neighbors. And there's a microphone all the way over here. And as you can tell, it's just right, the mic's over there, right, over there? You have, we have a voice that might actually carry. Are you gonna see? Okay, let's check. Dancing's fine, we're onstage.
My, uh, my first letter is from Lenny. He is on vacation, so he could not be here. Uh, he's made mention to me that he's sent a copy to all of you. I don't know if you've all received that copy.
It's in their bag.
Okay, and I need to read it real quick, so it's a matter of record.
Go for it.
Mayor Donald, members of the Hot Springs City Council. Our family lives at 128 South 16th Street in Hot Springs. On leaving of July 27, 2015, a thunderstorm dropped approximately one inch of rain in less than one hour over the town. And that spanned the time, all of his backyard, as I witnessed this. As well as adjacent alleys and properties became submerged by as much as two feet of stormwater. Since moving into our home in December 2014, we have twice seen our backyard flooded with stormwater. Indeed, several of our neighbors warned us soon after we arrived that the area was prone to flooding. Given our experience in the last eight months, along with pictures taken by our neighbors from previous floods, we had every reason to believe floods such as this routine, such as this our routine, and are likely to happen many more times in the coming years. In observing recent floods, it is clear the alleys that meet at the northwest corner of our property were seeing storm runoff from streets on all sides. We have video footage that shows water deep enough to exhibit a current pouring down the alleys leading from Albany Street to the south and 17th Street to the west. We would be happy to produce this video for anyone who would like to witness this phenomenon. As runoff pours, it quickly overwhelms the two drains that sit where the alleys meet. Atop this is an image from the most recent storm. Um, I, you know, my possibly in the public or no, or just submitted to you guys or what? A picture.
Picture?
Yeah, I got a picture.
I can take it and share it with the council.
Look at your picture. As my understanding of the city of Hot Springs intends to enlarge opening of at least one of these drains, is it possible this solution will mitigate some of the flooding? Even with a larger opening, will the drain pipe below be able to handle the volume of water even an hours flood? My concern is that the volume of water in you, in you dating, the center of our block will still overwhelm the capacity of the runoff pipe under the drain. This seems especially likely in the event of more severe storms than those recently experienced. Currently, drains located on Albany and 17th are already totally overwhelmed during these storms. That is why so much water arrives from neighboring streets. It's not effectively diverted before getting, it gets to the middle of our block. Could those drains be better designed to divert the stormwater before entering alleys? Would the capacity of those runoff pipes be able to handle the extra water diverted to them? I intend to make improvements to our backyard. In the process, adding to our home's value and that of our neighborhood. But the current, by all heavens, long-lasting problem of flooding is discouraging. I'm left to wonder whether my investments of time and money will become undone in the next big storm. That is sure to come. I suspect that our neighbors who have in early cycle longer than we have have similar misgivings. I ask that the city develop and implement a solution that will resolve the problem for all, but perhaps most extreme once in the 200-year events. Knowing the expense that comes with public works improvements, I offer my assistance now and in the future to procure funding, develop and implement a solution to this issue, and look forward to working with you on this in the near future. Respectfully, Lenny D. Frommiker.
I'm Scott Goodall. I live with my wife Cory and our newly born daughter, 142 South 16th. We've been there for four years. After the first major, uh, this last year was not major. We got water in our basement. Our house sits 60 feet from the alley, uh, five feet higher than the alley. And we got water in our basement. My garage got flooded and I lost, uh, about $25,000 in tools. No insurance company will give us flood insurance because we don't live in a flooding place. I have about $15,000 in damage to my garage. I have to rip out every handmade cabinet that's put in there. I had to replace all my floor tools. An electrician, tools aren't cheap. I came to the city and explained to them I'd like to build a canyon in the back. They said that can't be done. I recently talked to somebody who lived there prior to all of us. He said there was a canyon there. The city council bought that building and said they wanted parking more important than a canyon. So the city screwed us back then, hoping you don't do it again. Then, uh, the water was diverted down an alleyway by the car wash and it come out underneath the bridge. That bridge got destroyed. The aqueduct got put in place. And the exit for that water got removed. They covered it, capped it, and removed it.
Where did you say?
That was underneath the, underneath the old bridge was an exit pipe for all the water.
Before the viaduct was built?
Before the viaduct. Now, since I'm able to find this out, I've only lived here for four years, I'm, I'm hoping you all can find this out. I know we've been, the residents here have been, excuse me, I said screwed for the past 70 years. When the big storm comes, even with that ditch, it's still screwed. I know you have come up with a plan to try to improve the size of the sewer system, and it's gonna cost millions of dollars. I don't know if the state approved it.
I just talked to the state today.
Okay.
It's actually something that they don't even look at until January, but we got to get everything in place before January.
They'll take time. Apparently, the city doesn't have money to pay for what needs to be done in order to stop us living in a slump. And, you know, I'd like to have a budget for me, but not thinking.
Were there others that were wanting to speak as well?
Yes, and I'm just trying to get to the point I'd like to make.
Okay.
If you can't fix the problem, buy us out. We're all on board with this, except for Lenny, because Lenny didn't get to discuss this with us. Buy us out at fair market value and turn it into a park and dump the water there. It'd be a lot cheaper than doing what you guys want to do. And you have the funds to do that. Go ahead, some names.
Hi, I'm Tina Fritz and I live at 1638 Albany. Mayor Donal lived up in our area and so she knows the extreme severity of the flooding. Unless you guys see it, you would all think that we are hypocrite. It is unbelievable how we flood, how the water swirls in our neighborhood. Kids should not even be out in that area at this time because of it. It is very dangerous. We all have lost a lot of money, like Scott said too. We can't get insurance. So every time the flood comes, the erosion that now has a huge hole under my house because of this, insurance doesn't cover. I don't know where I'm gonna come up with the money, you know? And I know you guys are trying to fix it and I really appreciate, and I'm glad that you have been there to see that, but something really has to be done. Honestly, I, I think all of us are in agreeance that what's being done isn't gonna solve the problem, because all the water is still gonna run down, we're still gonna flood. Storm after storm after storm. We're afraid to leave. In the summertime, we're afraid to leave for fear of what we're gonna come home to. I've had a camper that, when the water submerged or subsided, had inches of mud in my camper. Thank God, it hailed at that time also. That's the only reason that Ivan was able to get money from that. Our cars have been submerged in water. Campers, homes. I'm just really hoping that you guys can figure something to divert the problem before it gets to us.
What's your address again?
1638 Albany.
16? I'd be happy to show anybody in the council what we're talking about. Like Tina said, I, I did used to live in that area.
And the storm that we had, this, this past one, this, that was nothing. You know, we've had, our neighbor has a, a wall that has, how tall is that? The, the orange, where the orange comes out? Um, the pole is probably about to here. And it literally is that tall in our alley. We're one of the highest places in Hot Springs. This should not be happening in my backyard. So I really hope you guys can come up with something. Thank you.
Well, I've been, lived here for 20 years at this place, 110 South 16th Street. And I had to put a wall around my house just to keep the water from coming in. And it'd come within an inch of going over that wall. And I raised it. And that cost me $4,000 to have a new wall put in. And my sister lived there before I did in the 50s and they were fighting in City Hall and she flooded. So this has been going on for 60 years.
What, what is your name and your address?
Pat Evans. 110 South 16th Street. But that's, that's it, but I'm just getting so close from flooding. I don't know what to do now.
Uh, my name's Tom Thorne, I live at 146 South 16th Street. Um, I've only been living in that residence for two years. I don't have as much experience as my other neighbors do. Prior to buying the house, I mean, I love the house, it's got the old sandstone foundation. I think it has a lot of character to it. I know my realtor had been living here for years, but nobody ever told me that there was just flooding issues on top of the house. I don't have a lot of money. My wife goes to school full-time, I work full-time. So I don't have a lot of money to make these repairs. Like, I could never afford to build a concrete wall going up there. Um, and last year was I first got it. Up at my garage door, which I'm even quite a ways farther uphill than my other neighbors are, I had hail and water up to my knees. I mean, I had to put sandbags inside my garage to keep my, my basement from flooding. It was kind of one of the things I'm disappointed is I was never made aware. I probably would have changed, um, my purchase of the residence, knowing that, um, I mean, in the summertime, I come home from work, I have to take time off from work to make sure that our street's not flooded. Even this last one, I always spent about a half hour out there cleaning that little grate, um, up beyond, on the alleyway behind my house. And it seems like that grate just isn't, isn't enough to handle what's there. So I don't know, maybe if I did anything good or not, but now I'm on a lightning storm for a half hour cleaning that grate, it's pretty dangerous, so. I'd just like to see something, you know, take some time to think about what will actually help fix this problem versus just doing something right away and then going back later, well, that didn't work, so let's throw more money at it, figure out, I mean, do it right the first time. I'm a government employee, I, you know, I know the government's got a history of, of doing things very rash and not putting a lot of thought into it, so. Especially with this, you have a lot of, you know, people's lives, um, you know, like she said before, like, we're scared to go sometimes. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Tom. Barb? I can't reach her. Georgia, what was your? Please pronounce your last name for us.
Almick.
Almick.
Hi.
Hi, Barb.
Hi. My name is Barb Almick and I live at 105 North 5th Street. And I just briefly wanted to talk a little bit, uh, briefly about the fireworks this year. I also felt that they were awfully excessive. My point is that this town proclaims to be a veterans' town and I don't believe we showed very much respect for our veterans suffering from PTSD with, um, all those days that are allowed of, of fireworks being legal, so, um, I just wanted to mention that, that I think we need to be a little more respectful of them and maybe less than the days that fireworks are allowed than what we have. But, um, what I really wanted to talk about was the recycling. I moved here in 2005 and I was really surprised that there was absolutely no recycling hardly anywhere in the, in several counties. I came from a state that had been recycling since the 1970s. But we did get recycling and that was, that was great, but then I moved back to Minnesota for one year and when I came back last fall, the recycling had disappeared. And I, frankly, I was pretty appalled by that. But I have talked to Beth Spitzer and I am aware that negotiations with Kiefer is coming up, um, this fall. But I would like to tell you just a little bit about what we did in the small town that I lived in Minnesota. Um, we, I understand that, well, the cost of recycling was one issue, but another issue was people throwing a lot of garbage in the, in the bins and leaving furniture, dropping furniture off there. And also the bins were located at the far end of the parking lot at Chopco, where, um, in, in the evening or at night, it's pretty easy to do that sort of thing. But what the small town I came from did was, um, they moved their recycling bins into a small parking lot that they had that was between their post office and their fire station. And they locked those bins, they were padlocked, shut, except for the one day a week when recycling was allowed. And they allowed it between 6:00 AM and 4:00 PM. And in those hours, that's when all the people that really did care about recycling would come and drop their stuff off. And then as soon, at 4:00 PM, then everything was locked up again. And it totally solved their problem of people dropping off their garbage and furniture and stuff like that. So I'm not sure exactly where we could do that in Hot Springs, where it would really be in, in, um, more of a public light than at the far end of a parking lot. But I just wanted to mention that because we really do need to become more aware of the carbon footprint that we're leaving in this community. That's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Barb.
Thanks, Barb.
That was all I had, was aware for communications from the public. Is there anyone else? Wanted to speak? Alright, we're gonna, oh, Kim.
Is this one working?
Yeah, that mic worked. Stand up.
Which one? Test. Can you hear? Is it working? Hi, Kim Meyer, 133 North 4th Street, here in Hot Springs. This is just a comment in regards to the last city council meeting. If you recall, two weeks ago, there were two individuals, um, that were sitting out here when they went to address all of you up here. One of them, me, from the time that they left their seat coming up to here, there was a complete sigh across the board. That was heard throughout the entire place. I was embarrassed. I was disgusted. You guys are all, you were all chosen to be up there to listen to the community, to hear what they want to say, not to sit there and go, ah. A former council member. Whether you disagree or agree with anything that he has to say, he should be respected and he should be heard. I think you need to be aware of how you carry yourself or conduct yourself while you're up there. And if each and one of, every one of you went and reviewed the video footage, you would definitely hear it. It was a topic of discussion after city council. Thoroughly disgusted. So I just would ask all of you, it's a paid position, you chose to be, um, up there, you were voted in, and I'm, now I'm gonna ask you guys all the referee sent yourself professional. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, any other comments from the, alright, we'll go to personnel? Just like to do them all at once?
I would make a motion, we approve A through F, um, personnel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, discussion?
Who is the second? I'm sorry.
Deanne. Oh. Was there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried on all personnel. I'd like to make one appointment tonight. Dwight Menia to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term. I do need a motion from the council.
Motion to approve.
I'll say it then. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Dwight's here, but thank you for offering, Dwight, if you're here. Um, committee reports. Admin and Finance, Carl?
Unfortunately, I didn't bring my notes with me. So I'm sorry, I don't know what to...
So you'll give us a nice long report on 17?
Yep.
Okay. Airport Advisory Committee? Georgia?
Yeah, well, we've been working on budgets and all that, but they did have meetings Friday.
You do need a mic.
Can you hear me now? Is it quitting?
Speak, we just begin to attract.
Getting T-hangers, that is their top priority. Uh, they did vote to have a new chairman, that's Larry Letterman. The seat plane has arrived for the rest of the fire season. The helicopter life flight hangar location is, was discussed and if it's approved, they have a location. Need to set up a time and date for all city council members to have a meeting with the Airport Advisory Board, so everyone is on the right page together on issues about the airport, so plan on that. You guys, um, discuss the additional $150,000 that Pete Lean is offering in our, um, deal for the airport. We started cutting weeds outside the wildlife fence so that when sprayed it in the fall, it'll have a better kill before it's reseeded. And one of them was Nolan was asked to check on the attachment from the county and I think we did that. We don't get any back on that. We discussed that next year's hang be done with a different percentage rate, 60/40. This year it was not done quite accurately, so we didn't have a very good income from it. And we'd like to have a committee formed for the life flight helicopter hangar, if that's possible. And then the advisory board should be included from the airport. That's all I have on that.
Alright, thank you, Georgia. Deanne?
Chamber? Chamber did not have a meeting since, uh, the last city council meeting, nor did the waste management did... Since the last city council meeting, nor did the Waste Management District. So I have nothing to report.
And historical preservation is probably the...
We meet Wednesday at 5:00 at the library. That's all I have to report next time.
Is that a public meeting or?
It's a public meeting.
Okay. So Wednesday at 5:00 at the library?
Right.
Okay. Evans Punge Advisory Committee, Kara?
We meet August 20th is our next meeting, 7:00 PM, upper floor of Evans Punge. And I'd be happy to report next meeting.
Thank you. Krista, I knew you had a meeting. Where are you? There you are.
Yeah, I had one.
Please speak into your microphone. Got some quiet talkers here.
Yes, we had two meetings actually for Park and Recs. We had the one meet and greet meeting where we just met and kind of met one another. And then we had one this morning, which it will always be on the first Monday at 3:00 at City Hall. And we went over the Park and Rec plan, which has to do with the tall grass plan, and discussed a few other items. And then we had a meeting with Kim Barriere and Diane for the cultural meeting. It was just kind of not actually a meeting meeting, but just a meet and greet type of meeting where we discussed the murals. And then our next meeting, I believe, is on the 20th of August. Is that right? And that will be at 6:00 at the bookstore. So it's about all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kim Barriere, just said we're going in order. Do you have a report from your last meeting? Or I know we get to your stuff.
Yeah.
A lot of your stuff later.
Yeah, you're gonna be going over everything.
Okay. And that's pretty much what you mean. Okay. Kim, public safety yet, August?
No, public safety hasn't been yet. It's the third Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
Public Works, we didn't have a meeting this week. It'll be next Tuesday at 2:00 at City Hall. Not tomorrow, Tuesday, but the next evening.
A week from Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay. And those are both public meetings at City Hall? Thank you.
What time, Kim?
2:00.
Georgia, did you meet with Southern Hills?
We didn't have a regular meeting this month. So I did visit with Jason though because we're working on the budget, so.
Okay, break. All right. Thank you all for those reports. And those are all public meetings. So if you have an interest in any of those items, please plan to join us. Resolutions. A, which 2015-35, a resolution updating personnel policy, sick leave payout.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Georgia was the loudest there. We heard her. Any discussion on this? I think this was something that was just a little bit of an oversight. Didn't work. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried on that resolution. Resolution 2015-36, a resolution to establish multiple parks and streets, department positions and respective top of scales. Hope you all had a good look at this one.
Motion to approve.
Carol Ann actually beat Carl on that.
Aye.
I don't know who's second though. Deanne, any discussion on this one? I think we had a little bit of a heads up on this one.
There's a lot of information there.
Yes, there is. So any discussion? Now's the time? All in?
Input from the audience?
Is this, is this just kind of re-titling?
It's reorganizing our cemetery, streets and parks departments. We build one city maintenance department with a single foreman as the one contact.
You either need to walk to the mic or speak very loud.
Can I speak very loudly? If, if this resolution is passed, as it relates to item C under new business, what will be the increase in salaries? What will be the impact of salary percentage wise of those positions, those new positions?
I'm losing you.
Okay, I did fade out. What percentage of increase will we see in salaries as it relates to item C under new business if we do this, if we pass this resolution?
It would be each increased respectively. It does list a new proposed salary. The previous ones, I don't have on top of my head. But basically what we're aiming to do is make our pay structure more competitive, as being asked of these employees. For example, we are requiring a class three maintenance operator to be CDL, obtain his or her class B CDL technical endorsement. So going rate for that, skill sets around $18 to $22 in the private, private sector. We're struggling to get them to that $1690 mark. So it's, we'll see an increase in overall pay. It does work with our 2015 budget. We are budgeting for that in 2016 as well, full calendar year. Basically, we identify strong talent. We want to be able to keep them, develop them, and promote them from within, opposed to having to go to outside hires.
So you do not have an answer to the question then?
I gave you the answer initially. I don't have the percentage of each position, but you're looking at five different positions here. So off the top of my head, I don't have that for you. Sorry. The council does have, though, the wage resolution towards the public. We also have this information as well to differentiate that. So if you do have the answer, well, please do feel free to share it.
But this is something that we can manage in our budget for 2015. So that was discussed and investigated.
I'd like to respond to what Nolan just said. It's exactly what Kim was talking about. Disrespect that you just showed to that gentleman by telling him, you tried to answer his question. And if his, if your answer wasn't satisfactory and he hadn't given it to you. That's exactly what Kim is talking about. And that's what the public is getting tired of hearing.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I guess I'd like to address you people. We have elections every year. And I guess we do what we think up here is best. And I'm sorry if you think we disrespect you. But I also think that everybody here in this audience and anybody in the town has a right to run for any office. And I would welcome it. But I'm getting tired of being criticized for a very high-hour, low-paid, small, respected job. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Old Business, discussion and motion on use permit application submitted by Steve Schwanik for an off-premise sign for StayUSA at 6:38 Indianapolis Avenue. And this is the second time we've taken a look at this. And Kim has an update for us.
I just wanted to update you on this. The last time we saw this, we had been charged with a couple of things. One was for Mr. Schwanik to get his state permit. And the other thing was, once he got that state permit, Tracy was to go and survey the alleyway next to his property to make sure that he had adequate space for the sign as he had proposed. Mr. Schwanik was having some difficulty. So I, he asked me and I intervened on his behalf. And I spoke to the folks at DOT. In fact, they do not want to be the first in line for any type of billboard sign. They want the city to go through and do the due diligence on whether this is a desired thing within the community, whether it's cited okay, all those answers being done. And then they just want to rubber stamp what we do. They don't have the time to invest, is what I was told, that they don't want to be able to spend a lot of time on a single sign. With that being said, it was then recommended from the DOT that we go ahead and permit it or not permit it based on what the council feels is appropriate. As far as the surveying, just now we have a situation where the permit wasn't completed so that Tracy could do his survey. But he did it anyhow and found that the alleyway is actually being used as an electric easement. So the easement will stay there. It's not going to ever be changed. And there's adequate space for the 10-foot setback along the property lines and before the building as he shows on his plans. So those were the two things that we had to look at. If you want to talk to Tracy or I, at any time, we'd be happy to go over that with you.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Schwanik, if he's here. Why did you want this billboard there?
Basically, just for advertisement. Billboards are of use in business. Everybody uses them. It's a good location. And truck bypasses are very popular with billboards in any community. I would ask you to approve this because I...
Can you speak up just a little bit?
I would ask you to approve this because I've done everything you wanted. You approved those on the truck bypass in the past. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have just one comment to make. I counted your signs around and they're nice signs. And there are 10 of them. There are six between Maverick Junction and Highway 18 turnoff, two on 71, one on University, another one on 18. And that's a lot of signs and they're nice. And I hope they send a lot of people to your hotel. And it has nothing, it's nothing personal, but I don't, I hate to see any more billboards be put in the city limits. Doesn't matter who they're for, what hotel. And that's just my personal opinion. I can't speak for this council. I'm just speaking for myself.
All right. Yes, Steve?
I think that's a little unfair to think that. You're supposed to represent people. At the first hearing, nobody objected to it, to their neighbors. There was one person that was there, a lady on the south, and she was in favor of it. As a council, you're supposed to represent those that are at the hearing, make a decision accordingly. You guys are taking personal views instead of like public ones. That's unfair.
I don't think that the people in my neighborhood would want billboards in our neighborhood. So why would I approve one in another ward?
This is not...
Well, it's the way it's spelled.
I know. It is, I know.
This is zoned accordingly for that. 10 billboards is not all that much. Waldgrove has thousands of them. Why, why you limit it to 10?
Do we have any other comments, concerns? Questions from the council?
I made a motion that we accept Steve's application to put a billboard into his our location.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Is that Georgia and Carol Ann? So motion? Or is it Deanne? So that's three now? Is that correct? The motion still carries, so. All right. Item E, discussion and possible motion to adopt council code of ethics. You have it in your packet. And also, as requested at the last meeting, a letter from the city attorney.
I'm concerned that we are...
We need a motion first and a second in discussion.
Go ahead. I'm not gonna make a motion.
Not either. You gotta ask me.
Yep.
I did.
Oh, you got it in here.
Oh.
We have a motion?
What? I'm sorry. Can we discuss?
I'll make the motion.
Item B, old business, discussion and possible motion to adopt council code of ethics. You have a letter from the city attorney in your packet. Did I get a second?
I'll second.
Second from Kara. In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd asked Nolan at the admin meeting if he would, even Carl spoke up at one time saying this should be for the whole city. It couldn't be the whole city. I asked why it couldn't be for elected officials. Carol Boz explained that. I asked Nolan if he couldn't take out the parts pertaining to the mayor that prevented the mayor's office from being part of this and make that a code of ethics for the mayor's office. This was suggested by the municipal league also. Nolan, did you ever do that?
I have, yes. But we can't really bring it up until we get to the next admin finance meeting. We have to discuss.
Okay, so you are working on that?
Yeah, I have received the request. It's, we worked on it. And if we need to get for admin finance, it'll be a point of business for us.
Okay. My point is it's discriminatory to have, we have the employee handbook for all the employees, and now we're gonna have a code of ethics for city council members, but nothing for the office of mayor.
Do you want to table this until after the next admin meeting?
It, if he's bringing that forward, then I'd be all right with that. It doesn't matter.
So we're asked to approve it tonight, but then change it later?
No, then we have, it's two separate code of ethics. It won't be the same. It'll be a code of ethics for the mayor and then a code, this is a code of ethics for the
city council.
I want to rescind my motion and table this until after the next admin and promotion committee meeting and to be on the agenda for the 17th of August.
I'll second that. Any discussion? For tabling?
This is for tabling, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, table to the 17th. New Business, motion to adopt new Evans Punge logo. I believe that's in your packets.
I'll make a motion to accept the new logo.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Is this the end? Is this the last?
Yes. Any discussion?
Has the city done anything about, I mean, does the city know this?
This was, there was an artist, call for artist, months ago. And this is a rendition from, they called it artist. And the artist was chose, an artist was chosen. And this is the result of that. Was some tweaking from council, some on council and whatever.
I think it's pretty. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I've only been in the town 10 years. So I mean, is the, is the city okay with changing what the logo looks like?
Art is so subjective and it was sent out for, to artists. But no, did it go out to the community to vote on it or anything? No. Neil, did you want to make a comment?
We see what it is.
Maybe.
It's been on the website, in the public packet. I'm just not sure that people are under the understanding that maybe the logo is changing. You know, a lot of people don't have the internet and I, if I wasn't part of city council, I wouldn't have known about it, I guess. So that's all I'm saying, is that it isn't up to me to make that decision for the entire town.
I think that's why they had the artist thing.
I'm not disagreeing, but I'm just saying, we're here to make the decision if this is okay. And I just feel that it's...
But that's what we need the council to do.
But nobody has, nobody has come forward to disagree with it. All right?
How many people have seen this?
That was my question. Thank you all.
Any other discussion? I had a motion in a second. Okay. In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. We have a new logo for the Evans Punge.
Which color is it? The copper one or?
All of them. It just depends on if it's on a white shirt or a black shirt or a gray shirt or... It just depends on if it's on a white shirt, or a black shirt, or a gray shirt, or a water bottle, or letterhead, Facebook. Yes, Barb?
On this social media one, how's people going to know what EP stands for?
So think of Facebook or Instagram. Instagram, all you have for your profile picture is something about the size. I would say it's something about your pinky tail size. And so we can't give our full impression with that. You click on the profile, you get the full information. So let's say Facebook, you have a square image about the size of your thumbnail. It's abbreviated, and you look on the page, you get the full, you know, Facebook photo, and you get the content. Basically, we need a way to communicate who we are in a small, very small micro setting. The majority of usage will be the full Evans Punge, with the details below it.
Okay, item B. Motion to sign cultural development mural contact- Contract for Evans Punge mural.
I'll make a motion to sign it. I'll second.
Any discussion?
I ask, and I talked to Misty about this earlier today, that- And this is actually, I questioned the sentence, and she had the solution that we had. Under the artist, she'll be reasonably compensated by the building owner, that's the city, for future maintenance and/or restoration services rendered requested. That we were not setting ourselves open to just any reasonably compensated bill that we might give.
For those of you in the council that's on the top of page four, that you can see that wordage. The artist shall be reasonably compensated by the building owner for future maintenance and/or restoration services rendered. We'd just like to see the addition of requested, so that we're not obligated to pay when we didn't request.
So I guess I'd just ask that that word be added to the contract. Maybe could the motion be modified to specify that?
With this change?
With that change?
And I do like the change as well. It does give us more control over when they work there.
So Deanne made the motion. I think she would have to-
Yeah, so if we could-
Deanne, would you change "requested" to the end of that sentence? On page six, at the top? Or four, excuse me? Yes, page four. The top sentence, just requested, will be added to that sentence.
So we have to, we can re- Instead of them just going and repairing the mural at their-
At any cost.
At any time. We would request- We would be more in control of when they did work, because it would be a billable item. After it's done, and you know, two years, three years down the road, if it needed a repair. Is that clear?
Sort of. I'll give it a shot. The artist shall be reasonably compensated asked by the building owner for future maintenance and/or restoration services rendered. Once requested.
Does everybody understand the new motion and why?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I do anyway.
Well, I'm looking for at least head nods. Yeah, you're good.
Does Maria Mars understand?
We just talked about adding it. We have to get a new one drawn up and signed.
So we're making the motion. If we make this change and they accept it, then we accept this agreement.
Okay.
Correct? Everybody in line?
My understanding of this too is that the Cultural Development Organization drafted this agreement, not Maria Mars.
Right, so three parties. The CDO drafted this to have Maria and us, the building owners, sign. So we go back to the CDO, make note of the change we request, and if they make that change, we'll sign off on that. Then we have a contract in place. Basically, I'm sitting with a contract that's been signed by two people. I cannot sign it until I have council approval. So now I'll go back and notify them of the changes you recommended we made. And if they agree, we'll draft a new one, and then I'll sign it at that time.
Okay.
Order of payments.
To her.
What's it?
Order of payments. None of that is at the city's expense. That's all paid for by the CDO. So this is a contribution, a voluntary gift, I guess, to the city and to the community as a whole.
So with those changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Item C. Motion to reclassify the street cemetery and parks department employees to the following maintenance department positions effectively immediately. You can read those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Lindsey.
Deanne? Oh, yes.
What's that?
No.
You want to hear now?
Yes.
Pull it out of there.
Okay. My question is for the council members. We passed a resolution to do some changes here, and now we're going to vote on doing that exact thing. I was informed that if I do my due diligence here, I can figure out, by looking at the old salaries and new salaries, what the impact on the remainder of the year is going to be. I'm wondering if you, ladies and gentlemen, have done that? If you know what the impact of the increase is going to be? Because it will be an increase. And I am not opposed to this or in favor. I just want to know that you guys have individually done your due diligence like I was told I had to do. And the manager doesn't have that answer for me. Thank you.
We do understand that the administrator and the finance officer have gone through the adjustments, and this is all within the budget for 2015, and it will be built into the position- Into the budget for 2016.
The question still is, do you know how much the increase is going to be to the exact dollar? And that information should be available right now.
I'm sorry. You addressed the question to me earlier, do I know the percentage difference? And the percentage difference, I absolutely do not know off the top of my head. We did, obviously, we could get it through an Excel spreadsheet calculation. We did calculate difference, total difference, anticipated 2080 work year. It does work within our budget. We do know the difference. The council was briefed on the difference. And if there's any concern, we'd be happy at City Hall to explain to the public what the difference would be, even break it down by percentages, by position, by employee. It's a publicly run institution, we'd be happy to provide that information.
We just don't have it from friendly families right now. I hear what you're saying, and it is important that we do know that. It's true.
I have a question, Nolan, about this, as he will tell you and Misty, where the funds were going to come from. And I've been sure that they have the funds, you know, in their street budget to take care of this. And I've contacted legislative audit about the manner it would be done. And it seems to be done correctly.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Item B. Proposed ordinance 1156. This would be the first reading, correct?
No.
No, it's a second?
No.
Where are we at with this?
We've been working with the Planning and Zoning Commission on this particular ordinance, and it was the-
Kim, I need you to just pick in the mic.
The 1156 is the ordinance changes to the manufactured homes and mobile home parks ordinance. It was decided with Nolan and I that although this has been in a fair amount of discussion with Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have given their recommendation for approval, we thought it would be prudent if we just had any discussion points for the council before we went into our first reading. The first reading will be held at the next meeting at August 17. And I can do a quick summary for you on the main top points of what we changed on this particular ordinance. I also gave you a copy of the strike-throughs and new addition languages that we had provided you in your packet. They were on the table before you sat down. So if you wanted to follow along with that, you can do so. But the main things that we changed in the manufactured home ordinance, this was through the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was told that the main thing that they wanted to change about the ordinance was that we treated mobile homes or manufactured homes differently than we did more permanent homes. And they said that they really wanted to make sure that we leveled out the playing field. So if we had a manufactured home that was being moved onto the site, the old ordinance required that they could not be older than 20 years old. They thought that that was a bit arbitrary, thinking that you could have a really cool vintage trailer come in, and it's in pristine condition, and yes, we want those. And you can also have one that's about eight years old and that's completely trashed. So the age of the unit really didn't matter. It was the quality and the safety of the unit. So we changed the language based on, actually, I based a lot of the language on what was in the building code. The building code, and we used the modeling from how to move a house into a new area and what they will get. The codes that I'm entitled to look at do not include plumbing or electric, but I can look at structural, and I can look at the exterior as far as our nuisance regulations go. So the new regulation language reflects that. Also, while we were looking at it, there was some confusion. There was two sections of the ordinance that were affected, section 13 and section 27. Section 13 dealt primarily with existing trailer parks. How they're supposed to be maintained, what they're allowed to do, what happens with larger units on smaller lots, things like that. So we really kind of clarified that that was for existing parks. The section in 27 actually dealt with making new manufactured home parks and what would be required. So we really tried to separate those things. And in the new manufactured home section, we really clarified a lot of things as it relates to the floodplain, which had not been dealt with before. A lot of the open land that has been used for manufactured home sites currently are actually in the floodplain, and we're dealing with a lot of problems with that. So we went through, and we used a lot of language from the building code to enforce and embolder and just help out that situation, so that whenever we do have the possibility of new manufactured home parks, that they are safely built and secured.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim?
Did you put out copies for everybody that show what the changes are? Are they out for the council?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Because I just found one up here. I split it with him.
Yeah, well, he had one right in front, and there was, I thought you had maybe got yours. So I didn't know.
I will, I'll print it. And I would ask Nolan from now on, anytime we're dealing with ordinance changes, be sure that we get strikeovers and printed, so we know exactly what the changes are, and we don't have to look at two documents to figure out where the changes are.
Love it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kim?
Thank you.
Don't leave. Thank you. You've done a really thorough job of that. We appreciate it. Item B. Discussion, proposed ordinance 1157, chapter 27, accessory apartment. That's why I didn't want you to leave.
Yeah. All right, Ms. Ordinance 1157. I did have to tell you too, we had a- We had a meeting in order to get these as a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did something a little bit different this time. We needed to get votes in, but we could not get everybody together because it's summertime, and most of the people do construction, and they're just not available. So we did a SurveyMonkey anonymous voting on a four-question questionnaire for both this ordinance and the last ordinance, basically saying, have you read and do you understand? That was one question for each one. And then the second one, will you recommend this as an ordinance change to the city council? This particular one that's in front of us, ordinance 1157, it is for amending the chapter 27A regarding apartments or accessory apartments in commercial properties with one or one and a half stories. We received four out of five votes for a recommendation to approve. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. This particular ordinance is in direct response to a series of use permit applications that the council has received regarding properties in the commercial zone that are a story tall in a commercial property with both people asking for an apartment in the rear of the building. The language basically incorporates it for not only the GC zone, but also the mixed-use zone, because they had very similar regulations regarding multi-story buildings and their second-floor apartment uses. So it would, I interpreted that as being that if it was good for one, it would be good for both. So included the multi-use zone as well. The basic understanding of this is that it will be a single apartment, taking up no more than 25% of that first main floor, maintaining a commercial use, and the storefront in the front. They need to have a separate entrance, and it cannot be associated with any food or drink establishments. That's the basic crux of it. If you have any other questions, I can answer those and kind of why we got to where we did.
I liked your changes. They took care of a lot of the problems we had, and within six months, I believe, is what you also stated, where you said it's a commercial property.
Yeah, that's correct. And once you've established your apartment, you have six months to get your business up and running.
Thank you, Kim. I also did read in this when I was going over the packet that if it sold, they would have to- Then the next would have to reapply, and it would be up for review.
Yes, and that was a direct response to input that we received from neighbors. They wanted the council to retain some review aspect on that, just to make sure that everybody understands the use of the building and what's expected of them.
All right, any other questions for Kim? Thank you for answering the Planning and Zoning Commission for all the work and the recommendation. We'll have this on for the 17th. Okay. For both of them, for the 17th. I believe we've made it to finance officer report. Misty? Do you have a mic?
I sent in front of each council member a letter that was received late Friday from DLA. The Auditor General at the Department of Legislative Audit received and accepted our 2013 audit report. Those of you that have not gotten copies yet, that should be up on their website now, and also it is available on our city website. I also received authorization from the Department of Legislative Audit to have Donna and Anchor and Associates perform our 2014 audit. And then I just wanted to mention to the council members that the South Dakota Municipal League Annual Conference is coming up October 7th, 8th, and 9th in Watertown. It sounds like rooms are already filling up fast, so if you are interested in attending, I have an agenda and would like your information, so I can get you registered and hopefully get some rooms for those of you interested in attending.
So if we can let her know before the next council meeting?
As soon as possible. Sounds like already the rooms are filling up, so we'll do our best to find them.
Yeah, a lot of people from all over the state attend this conference, so it is well-attended and-
It's a lot of good information.
And it's very good information. Thank you, Misty.
Thank you.
And the good news is that we're down one audit, one to go. Really good news. Thank you. Nolan?
And like Misty's mentioned, we do offer the audit review on our website, as well as the DLA's website. But if any of you don't use the internet or unfamiliar with it, our library does an amazing job of getting people online. And so if you'd like to see it online, I definitely recommend that it's your first stop. Go to the library, ask for assistance. They'll get you logged in and help you get to that site. Or if you do prefer a hard copy of these materials we keep referencing, City Hall, we always have them available as well at request. Following up with that, you know, budget is- Following up with that, you know, budget is a top priority for the city. August is a big month for us to not only prepare the budget, but to go through and make our revenues align or make our expenses better aligned with our revenues. And in doing that, we had budget hearings last week, Tuesday and Thursday. I'd like to thank the public for attending, the organizations for making requests, meaning with our schedule, that was great, and also for the council members who are showing up, you know, not only at their twice-month meetings and their committee meetings, but now also twice a week for budgeting. And these are not one-hour, you know, light-thinking meetings. These are very... Require very thought-intensive time from the council members. So thank you all for dedicating your time to do that. I know it goes back to the Call of Duty. Thank you. With that, we have... Our department has made their requests and from those requests, we're able to know how our revenues will be able to meet the expenses being requested. After the initial budget hearings from our general fund, we are facing having cuts about $500,000 to $600,000 ahead of us to make our apartments requests actually align with our revenues. So this week, beginning tomorrow at 5:30 at city hall, another public meeting on the budget, public hearing, I guess, on the budget. We'll start going through our general fund and looking how we can trim back on our projected expenses or our requests, so to speak, and make them actually align with our projected revenue. The goal, and this is an obvious statement, but I'd like to clarify, the goal is to make the city of Hot Springs as financially sustainable as possible. And this includes not only doing a good budget for this year, but having a budget plan in place that protects the city for the next five and 10 years from any incidences, say a rainy day fund or having a contingency fund that we can look on to know that we are in a good place financially. So I ask for continued patience from the public, but 2016 budget will make us more sound than ever before in terms of being fiscally responsible and fiscally sustainable. So thank you.
Thank you, Nolan. So we'll see you all tomorrow at 5:30 at city hall to hopefully get a lot farther along with our 2016 budget. And I know Nolan's done a lot of work in suggesting the cuts, so I look forward to a very productive meeting tomorrow. Little less exciting, just update on our master plan for our airport. Our engineering firm is working on chapter four, facility recommendations, and chapter five, alternative analysis of the master plan. So that work is ongoing. Also, no update to the grant to be issued for the parallel taxiway. I always get to do that. I think everything else has pretty much been said. Thank you all for the work you've done for the budgets. Very important that you're there tomorrow night, 5:30 city hall. And that's all I have. I'd like to thank Nolan. I think he's done an excellent job of presenting the budget to us, so I'd like to say thank you. And I'd like to have Misty on that one too. Thank you too so much. You've done a lot of work and I really appreciate it. The hard part's tomorrow though?
Yeah.
But yeah, they've done a great job.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thanks for coming, to those of you in the public, appreciate your comments.